Welcome to the July 25 Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, we're pleased to have with us Pastor Simeon Timbuk from the Vezesta Romanian Pentecostal Church to give our invocation, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise Pastor, welcome. Come right here.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and we are grateful for your kindness and faithfulness shown upon us, and I ask you to bless the council tonight, to give your wisdom and understanding and discernment on the items there before. I ask you to bless our country, to bless our federal government, the president, and the congress. Give them wisdom to lead us and bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor. We have already done the roll call before we had our exec session, and so we'll go on now with, there are no special presentations this evening or carryover items. So the first item actually for business is a public hearing, and these three public hearings in a row here are all tied in together having to do with a company that has come here from Madison Heights. Correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Lakhari will present for staff before I open the public hearing.
Good evening Mayor, members of council, nice to be here again. This is a little bit different than the other ones we've seen in the past. This company, U.S. Ferrothane, has an existing abatement in Madison Heights that they wish to transfer to Troy, which they're allowed to do under the probably five or six year old revisions to the state law. They also are applying for a new tax abatement. So what we would do at this point in time is talk about the district, because none of those two things can happen without a district being established. As I mentioned, they have an existing exemption in Madison Heights. It's about $715,000 worth of equipment, and it expires at the end of 2015. They also have a new exemption that they'll be applying for here in Troy. It's a little better than $1 million, and they have a seven and a half year lease on their building. They're creating eight new jobs to go along with 74 jobs that they'll be moving into Troy to the site at 754 West Maple. Mr. Hallowack was nice enough to mention the error that we have apparently in the address. It was a two tenant building at one point in time, 750 and 754. They are addressing it as 754. I've made that correction in the system. Unfortunately, that won't show up until after midnight tonight, so tomorrow morning that'll be on everyone's computer that wishes to look at it. They do qualify for both abatements, they do qualify for a district. You can create a district anywhere you want in the city, quite frankly. In this particular instance, you could approve one abatement, or both abatements, or none. We would recommend that you approve the district, then look at the abatements, because they can't have any abatement without a district present. And with that portion of the presentation over, I'd answer any questions about the district itself.
Counsel, are there questions about the district at this time for Mr. Lakhari? Yes, Councilman Harlock?
Just a question about the building at present. The, it's obviously going to be occupied under a lease term. The, I didn't, I must admit, I didn't, actually I don't have that available to me, but is it currently assessed at a depressed valuation for vacancy or no?
It has a reduction for vacancy. That may or may not change depending on the terms of the lease. When the building is leased like this, we would do an income approach to value on it. My understanding from the lease that I have, the copy that I have, that information is confidential, that's why it's not in the public packet, is that there'll be an increase in the valuation of the building. And the building is not to be abated, there's no abatement on the real property for this.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Matt will open the public hearing. Is there anyone that is here on this item that wishes to speak?
I'm sorry, Mr. Knapp is here from the company. If you have any questions, he doesn't have a presentation available.
Okay, thank you. Anyone that wants to speak on this item, on the district, establishing the district? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution. Councilman Fleming?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby establishes an Industrial Development District, IDD, for property known as 754 West Maple, Troy, Michigan, 4808-4-5315, parcel number 88-20-28-304-023, in accordance with City Council Policy Resolution Number 210-08-173, and be it finally resolved that Troy City Council hereby directs the city clerk to forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission, Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7971.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilman Beltramini, that we approve the resolution establishing the district as printed and writ. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Hallowack.
Just to reiterate my consistent position with respect to tax abatements, I have concern about giving one property owner special treatment, whereas other property owners, including those who have been in the city for many years, are obligated to pay their full taxes. My question's relating to the value of the building was, I think that a potential mitigating circumstance would be if we knew for sure that the actual real property value would offset any decrease that we would have by abating the property taxes. I don't know that it's clear at this time, but, but, you know, that'll be something that we can take, or that I can take into consideration in future requests, but at this time, I will have to vote against this and the other two resolutions.
Further discussion of the resolution before us? Mrs. Bittner, the vote?
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Hallowack?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. The second item, E2, is the public hearing for the transfer of an industrial facilities exemption certificate for U.S. Ferrothane Corporation from Madison Heights to 754 West Maple. Mr. Lakhari?
Madam Mayor, if I may speak out of turn here, I'd like to answer Councilman Hallowack's question. The issue is the cap, quite frankly. The assessment can change dramatically on this property, but because of the W, excuse me, the WPW decision, additions in occupancy do not go on the taxable value, so that will be capped at whatever the inflation rate will be, and that will not cover the cost of the abatement. That will not happen. Moving on to the second item, this public hearing is for the transfer of the existing exemption that the company has in Madison Heights under state law. They are allowed to transfer that abatement anywhere in Michigan, as long as they meet the original city's criteria. So, we don't really have a lot that we can say about this issue, other than the fact that you could turn down the exemption. That is certainly appealable by the company to the state, and quite frankly, we don't have a lot of leg to stand on in that instance. There is a small amount of personal property left over from this abatement. It only has three more years that it would run on our tax rolls. The equipment is quite old at this point, and it's fairly well depreciated. So you're looking at a $715,000 investment for them. Their total taxes on that over the years remaining is only $5,600, of which 1,786 would be city taxes. So their savings on that abatement in total taxes is just under $2,800, and the city taxes on that amount is about $893. We're not talking a lot of money here, and again, they meet all of the state criteria. A prudent move would be to approve the abatement, that's the recommendation of staff, because they do meet all of the state criteria for this existing abatement. The other issue to keep in mind is that they are going to bring 74 jobs into the community that we do not have now. And the building that they are occupying, in reference to Mr. Hallowack's question, has been vacant for six years. There's been no tenants in there for that entire amount of time. So we'll be filling up a very large building that is very difficult to lease, and this company is consolidating operations, not just from Madison Heights, but from Warren and other locations. So it's a pretty big win for the city, it's kind of a kick in the pants for Madison Heights. And I can answer any questions you might have on that.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lakhari in this portion?
Mayor?
Councilman Harlock?
How far are they moving now?
I'm not positive. I believe they're on Ajax Drive. They're moving from Madison Heights, it's about a three mile drive. It's not a large distance involved.
Okay.
It's a much smaller facility, though, that they're moving out of.
Sure.
Okay, seeing that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak on the public hearing for the transfer of the IFEC for U.S. Ferrothane Corporation from Madison Heights to 754 West Maple? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return it to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed in the agenda. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mayor Protem Kerwin?
I did appreciate the city assessor's information, which he included on these items, including that right to appeal. I thought that was an important piece. He did use the phrase "kick in the pants." I do recall a time when in fact, we were the city that was left behind on a number of different times. We have now some additional tools, and we gave the direction, and management has responded to attract companies in. 74 jobs is 74 people making a difference in economic vitality of this community. So I'm pleased to support this, and we'll be voting yes.
Further discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Mr. Lakhari?
It has a modified resolution on the table. It has a whereas that was not included in the first resolution, which Nino can explain.
I feel really bad that I completely forgot about that. We have, we have another company where you had approved an abatement three or four months ago, and just this morning, I got an email from the state, and this, on the printed one that you have here, and also for the next one, this is the fourth whereas down. They've requested that we add language to our standard resolution for these items, so that we could, they can verify that it either is or is not 5% of our total tax roll. Our tax, our total tax abatement roll doesn't approach 2% of our roll, but they require that language, so I will have to bring that company's resolution back to you on August 8th to amend, to include this language. Since I had the language in front of me, I thought it best to do this company now, rather than approve it and bring it back again in two weeks to correct the language. But that is the whole paragraph, and it's exactly as the state has printed it. So that's the only difference between the two resolutions, is it does include that clause about the 5% of total roll.
Thank you. Well, we'll amend the resolution then. The mover and the second, would you amend to include paragraph four?
Yes.
As laid on the table.
As laid on the table. Further discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Hallowack?
Just a brief comment. You know, the economic development knows no boundaries, and to move one company three miles up the road, quite frankly, we should be happy if a company's in Madison Heights. Madison Heights should be happy if a company's in Troy, but if we're trying to take their companies, and they're trying to take our companies, quite frankly, the only thing we do is we, everybody gets an abatement, and the cities get less tax revenue. What we really need, from, you know, from a standpoint of economic retention, is to bring new businesses and jobs into the area, and also to incubate local jobs. And the fact is that there have indeed been property owners in the city who have paid 100% of their tax due without an abatement, and the fact that they're paying their 100% fair share means that the abated company is essentially getting an unfair advantage. That is my opposition to this. And I think it's a bloody shame that, that we're really happy that we're stealing businesses from Madison Heights, because now they have a building that's empty, and they may do the same thing to us. So we need to actually work together in this game.
Councilman Harlock, I don't know that we have actually asked this company to leave Madison Heights. I think companies have, make decisions based on what is best for their particular company, and Mr. Lakhari explained that the facility that they're going into is much larger, which gives them more opportunity for expansion, and there have been companies that have come to Troy that have not chosen to go for exemptions, but some do, and this is a tool that the state offered, and therefore, because other communities are using it, we use it also. And as Mr. Lakhari indicated, in this instance, is not a lot of money that's involved, but it is something that they wish to pursue. Those are my comments on that. Anyone else? Mrs. Bittner, on the resolution as amended?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Hallowack?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Motion passes. And then the last of the three public hearings, and this time, we have the yellow sheet right in front of us here, is the public hearing for the granting of the industrial--
Again, this resolution is on your table, and it does contain the new clause. And as I stated before, this is a new abatement for them at this new location, so they can buy some new equipment. It's a little better than $1,022,000. They qualify for three years based on the amount of the investment, the number of jobs, and the length of the lease. That's per council resolution. You'll see that highlighted further back in your packet. They are bringing in eight more jobs, along with the 74 jobs that they're moving in from Madison Heights, so they hope to create eight more jobs. They're on a tight timeframe here. In general, we give these people two years to build up, but they intend to be up and operating probably within another month or so. They're, they're very anxious to get into the building, so they can do their expansion and get their, their business up and running. So again, this is a three-year abatement. Their total savings would be about $15,000, of which just under $5,000 would be city taxes over the three years. Because the equipment is new, it depreciates slower, so we carry a little more value for the three years that it's on the rolls. And I can answer any other questions you might have about this one.
Questions for Mr. Lakhari on this item, from council? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return to the council table for a resolution of the yellow sheet.
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
I'll move EO3 as laid on the table, request for consideration to grant an industrial facilities exemption certificate, IFEC, for U.S. Ferrothane Corporation, 754 West Maple. Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as laid on the table.
Madam Mayor.
And for the audience, that is the same as in your packet, except for paragraph four, which is an addition. Councilman Beltramini?
Economies are in fact regional, but our state law is archaic in that it is jurisdictional. And until state and federal tools catch up with the real world, this is one of the tools we can use to attract businesses. And we don't go seek them and say, "We can give you this." It is one of the tools that everyone uses when people come calling. But I agree with Councilman Hallowack, that if we're going to do it, recognize the regionalism of the economy. Look at, is it fair for just the home jurisdiction to get, to have to give up money? But that has to be changed at the state level. And until that time, we have buildings that are empty, that need to be filled, and people who live here who want to work. And it is our job to provide the leadership to make that happen whenever we can, and this is one of those tools.
Further discussion of the item? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Hallowack?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes the public hearings. Thank you, Mr. Lakhari, and next we'll go to public comment. And last week, I neglected to give the preamble that this is on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. Last week, we had someone who was here on an agenda item and did not speak during public comment, thought they had to wait until their item came up, and we changed the rules on that several years ago. So we take all comments on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda at the public comment section, which is now. There are more than 15 that have signed up, so therefore, I move that we suspend the rules to change the time from five to three minutes per person. This is on the suspension of the rules. Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Kerwin. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner, on the suspension of rules?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Hallowack?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Chair moves that we allow three minutes per individual to speak in public comment as per rules when more than 15 people have signed up.
Support.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Beltramini. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bittner?
Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltramini?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Hallowack?
No.
Mayor Protem Kerwin?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. And as per our usual way of doing it, I'll call on five people, and they come to the microphone in that order. When we get to the fourth person, I'll call on the next five, and that way it'll move along. So our first five people are James Kleinschmidt, Janice Daniels, Marvin Reinhardt, Richard Peters, Bruce Boomingley. If those five people would come forward in that order, please. Right here to the microphone. And you are Mr. Kleinschmidt?
Kleinschmidt.
Yes, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Schilling, and members of the council. My topic tonight is a, an apology for Councilman Slater. I received this political pamphlet on my doorstep the other day, and it in general spends a lot of time alleging a lack of leadership in Troy, as well as profligate spending on wages and benefits. There are even cartoon pictures of fat people sitting on treasure chests. What bothers me is that on the front of this pamphlet is a picture of Councilman Dean Slater, a man who I happen to admire. The caption under his picture reads, "Now receives a pension for life." Not just a pension, but a pension for life. And the intent is clear. Councilman Slater is being portrayed as one of the people who has managed to get some of that exorbitant compensation. Incidentally, he's also labeled as a member of the anti-library four, which is kind of reminiscent of the Gang of Four, I guess. But I'm not addressing that tonight. I don't think voters will be gullible enough to take that seriously. I am concerned about the pension issue, however. If one wants to fool someone, but does not wish to come out with an outright lie, we learn early in life that what you can do is leave something out. You talk about the 100%, you got on the spelling, and you forget about the 50% you got on the math. And that's what's happening here. They left something out, something very important, and as you might guess, I happen to have that right here. It's well portrayed in a news release from the Troy Police Department, which says in part, "On Friday, January 9th, 2009, the City of Troy Police Department celebrated the retirement of six command officers with combined experience of 200 years." And they go on to say that Captain Dane Slater joined the department in January 1974. Dane Slater retired as Services Division Commander, but also served as commander of all other department functions. At the end of the paragraph, they say, "He has received numerous commendations and awards during his career." And so it appears that Captain Slater has earned his pension and did it the hard way, and the Troy citizens got their money's worth, as is no doubt the case, for the other officers who survived to get that pension.
Sir, I have to stop you--
That's three minutes?
--because we're only allowed three minutes.
Is that really?
Yes, sorry, we had the clock going.
All right. I merely ask that these people, Troy Citizens United, apologize to Councilman Slater.
Thank you, sir. We'll call on the next individual. Mrs. Daniels, would you like to take care of that apology?
I will apologize to the good Captain Slater when he apologizes to us for calling our comments crap. At any rate, if I have my full three minutes now, I'm also going to talk about numbers and fairness, and as you know, I have been an associate broker for a major real estate company here in Troy, so I have verifiable numbers and addresses to document the facts that I'm going to share with you this evening, so I hope no one comes up later and attempts to say that I'm not telling the truth. There are six homes that were put on the market at a bank-owned, bank-owned sales here in Troy in the first 25 days of this month of July 2011. That means another six families have lost their homes to the bank. I wonder how these families feel about a tax increase. There are 24 homes currently being actively marketed for short sale here in Troy. That means that there are 24 families with children, and maybe grandchildren, who will not be able to cover their mortgage. This means they'll have to destroy their credit, through no fault of their own probably, because they couldn't afford the expenses associated with keeping their homes, and they have to sell in a down market. I feel very badly for these families. I wonder how they feel about the city council holding on to more than $12.3 million of our tax dollars while they lose their homes? That's 24 families. There are 25 homes currently marketed for lease in the city of Troy. Eight of them appear to be owned by investors, people who are paying 35% more in property taxes because these aren't their primary residences. The other 17 families appear to be trying to save their homes by leasing them out. I wonder how all of these people feel about your refusal to update your budget with more favorable numbers, while these investors are paying 35% more in property taxes, and the others are having to move their families out of their homes? It doesn't seem fair to me. Then there were 22, excuse me, there were 22 homes that closed on new leases in the city of Troy in the month of July 2011. Of these 22 homes, five were non-homesteaded in 2010, which means that they have been leased out before, so the remaining families will have to move out of their homes this year because they can't afford to live there anymore. And now their property taxes will go up about 35% because they'll be renting these homes out. I wonder if they think it's fair that the city council is demanding more tax dollars, even though you have enough money in your budget to keep five libraries open with no new taxes? These are the kind of people that Troy Citizens United are concerned about. We insist that it's not the time for a tax increase of any kind. We are all paying quite enough in taxes, we'll continue to pay our taxes, so the money will continue to roll in. So this $12.3 million that you have sitting there in your budget isn't going to be all used up. We're going to supplement it with additional tax revenue in the future, and we aren't close enough to the Atlantic Ocean that the city of Troy-- And we aren't close enough to the Atlantic Ocean that the city of Troy is going to have to worry about an emergency like a tsunami that's going to destroy the city. The emergency at hand is that you four councilpeople, Mayor Schelling, Councilwoman Curwin, Councilman Slater, and Councilwoman McGinnis, don't care enough about the people who are being hurt the most by your decisions. I'll be voting no on August 2nd, and I'll expect you to keep the library open with no new taxes.
Next we'll hear from Marvin Reinhardt. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Schelling. I'm glad that you guys had that first three meetings here, because it's fair. Remember that Chinese woman I keep telling you about? She had her paperwork a little bit messed up. She couldn't have her school. But now this company that demands tax breaks, this guy comes in with a proposal that you got to reword, and he's got to come back, but you voted on wording that wasn't even going, that's not voted on. So he's going to change the wording of your vote. And that's how they treat minorities in this city. Just blatantly just run over their rights. And here's this little chart of all your tax abatements you guys give away. You guys ever see that these guys actually do what they say or you just take their word for it? Because when General Motors said they're going to bring 500 people into Poltown, they brought them in for Pennsylvania. They didn't hire nobody off the street in Detroit. So you got to figure out where these guys are coming from before you guys bend over. And second of all, I heard last week, Councilman Slater is an expert on crap. So I'm going to ask him, why does a rabbit just shits craps little bit? A goose looks like a cigar, and a cow looks like a mud pie, since he's an expert on crap? You know, let him think about that for a little while. But all I got to say is that if you're a white person in this city, you can do what you want, because that guy's going to fix it. And what happened to our finance manager? I didn't see him get a big certificate. What did he do, goof up? Or was he too honest and he wasn't going to go along with your statikins, so he's gone? What happened to the guy? You guys give certificates to everybody, but not him. Did he steal money from us? And second of all, remember, Councilman Slater, when he was a policeman, was one of the few policemen that didn't take a lie detector test? And I asked him in court, you were there, Mayor, about that. Why didn't he take a lie detector test? Because I'm told by the police I don't take one. I did the crime. So I just want you to remember that about Councilman being a police chief or whatever he was. To me, he wasn't very good when he was. And now, what happened to that drug money that the police says not a crime? And I know how many policemen get pulled over for drunk driving and driven home, okay? So don't tell me about the police in this city. You have a good day, and I hope the vote goes, because I'm going to sue this city.
Mr. Peters, we'll hear from you next.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
It might be wise for the attorney to remind people under public comment that there are some parameters in civil court.
Mrs. Blum, would you like to talk about slander?
Yes, Mayor, there is public comment. Obviously, people have a right to express their opinions, and council would need to hear that. However, defamation could be actionable, slander could also be actionable.
Thank you, Mrs. Blum. I was going to bring it up under comments at the end. I'm glad that Mayor Protem Curwin said something now. And I hope people understand that you're free to express your opinion, but there is a way to do it and a way not to do it, so. Mr. Peters, would you come forward, please, and give us your public comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thanks for letting me talk, and I think you're all good folks, so.
Use the mic or we won't be able to hear you. There you go.
Okay, yeah, I, okay. I just want to say, I hope that people, I want to say, I hope the people of Troy make the right choice next week, vote yes for our library and vote for the future of Troy, and I believe the integrity of the community and the well-being of us all. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about this federal budget thing. I think it's time that Congress not be the Republican Party of 1929 or the Democratic Party of 1933 and '34. In each case, it turned out to be a disaster for the country. So I think we should just forge ahead like statesmen and do what's right for America. Now's not the time to be afraid to do the right thing. Don't ask those whom least afford it to put their headstone on the grave for, before their time. And maybe we should act like Simon who helped with the cross, only we, the government may help us to bear the burden that we all share. So let's spend hope instead of fear, dreams instead of nightmare, courage instead of temerity, and optimism instead of despair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Boomingdale, before you start, I'm going to call the next five people. Pam Brady, Audrey Zambroski, Ed Greszek, Gerard Stager, and James Grith. Go ahead, Mr. Boomingdale.
Good evening, Mayor, council. In recognition of the fact that we'll be voting on the library next week, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Recently, I've been thinking about the legacy that this city inherited from the people that got this city started. My opinion starts with the master plan. Hundreds of acres were set aside for parks. Acres were set aside for schools, which gave them a good base to start. I believe that the, our forebears, how far you go back, were smart enough to ask the federal government to situate I-75 in a way that used up as little land as possible. And I think that they understood their vision statement, which is the city of tomorrow today. Makes me wonder what they would be thinking about and how they decide about the library that we're going to vote on here in a few days. Abraham Quinck, I'm going to quote Abraham Lincoln, who said, quote, "I am a firm believer in the people. If given the truth, they can be depended upon to make the right decision. The great point is to bring them the real facts," unquote. We have the responsibility to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. A man I admire greatly said here yesterday that in our society, the unfortunate thing is that the truth has become relative. And when you pursue that far enough, then there is no truth. So with that in mind, it's critical that as citizens, we be diligent in evaluating the facts that we're confronted with as to their truthfulness. The third point is, I'd like to thank you, city council, for having the courage, the fortitude and the wisdom to bring us a ballot proposal that we can vote on. I came here with actually two things. I've run out of time, but I'm going to try this one anyhow. I admire Dane Slater. I understand what he did, along with the other officers. Do we forget the fact that policemen in the city have been killed? Do we understand that when they walk into an empty warehouse with a shotgun and they rack that shotgun, that they're as afraid as the guy that they know is in there? Is anybody that wrote this article walked up to a car that has been stopped, understanding that that person there has the potential to fire through that door and maybe through their armor and kill him? Dane Slater, along with other officers, have carried a badge and carried a gun to protect the city. I'm tipple of death to know that they're getting a pension, and my hat's off to all of them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Pam Brady?
Good evening. Sorry, he was tall. Madam Mayor, city council, city staff, fellow residents, good evening. I am Pam Brady, president of the League of Women Voters of Troy area. The League of Women Voters of Troy area supports and encourages a yes vote on the August 2nd ballot proposal to levy .7 mills for five years as dedicated library funding. The Michigan League of Women Voters has a position that supports adequate funding for public libraries that will ensure services to all residents in Michigan. Last summer, Troy League members studied the issue of funding the Troy Public Library. We read reports and laws, took trips to local libraries, met with library directors and board members, and debated the past and current situation of declining revenues for public services. The Troy League study reaffirmed the need for a stable, sustainable funding source. The library is an indispensable contribution to the quality of life for the residents of the city of Troy. A library is a great equalizer for all children from zero to five years old, who may or may not otherwise have access to books. A library is a central meeting point for computer use, storytimes, book clubs, job searches, and research. A library is a resource available to all residents regardless of ability, language, age, or education. And a library is a major amenity that makes Troy a destination city with desirable schools and property values. The League encourages citizens to become informed and to vote in the August 2nd special election. The League supports a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Next we'll hear from Audrey Zambroski.
Well, I came up here one time before and said, yes, I'm on the advisory board, but I speak for myself up here. I've been gone for four weeks, and I was out of town. My brother passed away, so I couldn't come to any council meetings and that. And, but when I came home, I found this in all my mail stack. And I looked at it, and I thought, okay, we're going 0.7 for mills for the library. But on here I find, and it says that we are going to give three, over $3,000 to the local development finance authority, over $50,000 to the downtown development authority, and 129 for Brownfield, when this was a proposal that was all to go for the library. And now it says this is state-mand Detroit. I've been coming here for 10 years to every council meeting, missing now and then, and I've lived here 34 years. I have never, ever read any of this before. And now they say this is for the library? And now, I'm going to have to tell you, I changed my mind. Mine is definitely a no vote on the library. Sorry.
Mrs. Zambroski, we'll clarify during comment response about why that wording is on there for you and for Mrs. Zambroski.
Why couldn't this have been written up in the newspaper? I don't remember reading it in the newspaper. My daughter was home, nobody read it, and I said, "Read anything you can find on that tax."
We will clarify.
And nobody found anything.
We will clarify, thank you. Next we'll have Ed Greszek and then Mr. Stager.
Madam Mayor.
Feel free to adjust the mic.
Madam Mayor, city council, city manager. I was here last, the last meeting, the 11th. I was pretty disgusted when I left here. I felt like I'd been kicked in the pants. And Dane Slater, when he called, when he said crap, when he called the comments that the people were voicing as crap, because we don't want a tax increase. Most of us want the library, we don't want a tax increase. You have the funds for the library, you should use those funds. I've been a taxpayer, I've been living in Troy now for 27 years, paying my taxes, paying to me quite a few dollars in taxes. The last couple of years have been bad. You guys took a 10 percent cut, and that's nothing. Some of the people out here lost their jobs. I took over a 50 percent cut the last couple of years, and now you want to raise taxes. You know, people out here are hurting, and then I find out a 401Ks, you guys get a 10 percent match. Well, maybe not 10, maybe 8 percent, I heard. But even an 8 percent match is a little bit heavy. Lot of companies cut those out altogether. You guys still have your matches. Lot of companies don't even offer 401Ks or pension plans, and there are pensions here. Now, I believe an officer should have a pension. I have great regard for police officers. But when you called the comments you were hearing here as crap, because people want to save their money and want you guys to use that money judiciously, you know, that's a bunch of crap. We work hard for our money, and we want to see it spent correctly. This Rochester Road looks beautiful. Do we have to do that? These pavers out here, they look beautiful. Who's paying for all that? We don't need to have all that here in the city. Shared sacrifice, everybody wants to say, but you guys aren't sharing any sacrifice, I don't think. You know, government just keeps getting bigger and bigger, and the people have to cut it, we have to cut back. I have to go into my retirement funds to keep paying my bills. And I don't see why you guys just keep getting bigger and bigger. You should be taking cuts like everybody else has to take, and you have the money. You have the $12 million. Use that now, while things are tough, and when things get better, then you can, then you'll have the money for the library. So I'm for the library, but I'm against any kind of new taxes. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Mr. Stager.
And that was a very rude comment.
Next, we'll hear from Mr. Stager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm here to ask that Troy citizens please vote no on the millage increase request that will be on the ballot. We're not even sure if that money is committed to the library, because it's not in the city charter, and it could have been put in the city charter. Back in 2004, in Auburn Hills, at the Fieldstone Golf Course, they used $500,000 of police and fire money to put up the golf clubhouse. Maybe that could happen here in Troy, maybe it couldn't happen, but that money is at risk. We have the money for the library, and here's how. Councilman Fleming and Councilman Holowack submitted a budget that continued the current funding of the library at $2.4 million a year, and they kept the city on designated reserves at over 15 percent that city council wanted. We heard repeatedly from the people who say we should shut the library on council, that they wanted to see an entire city budget to show that there was money for the library, and if they did, they would certainly keep the library open. Well, Councilman Holowack and Councilman Fleming brought that up in May. The money's there, council must follow through on what they said. The library won't close down because the money is there, and we've got the money for the library, and we all want the library. Oakland County has kept its services, they've had to make reductions, but they've kept their services intact without a millage increase. The Huron-Clinton Metro Park Authority, that runs the metro parks, hasn't had a millage increase. They all manage their money like we do in the private sector, we, who are non-government, do, to keep things under control. We don't need a tax increase in this tough economy. And there's concern about waste in the city government. There is still a lot of excessive spending. The retirement plan here in the city is 10 to 13 percent contribution from the city of Troy, 8 percent from newer hires. In the private sector, you're lucky to get 3 percent. It's three to four times what we get. Our city manager currently collects 130, he was collecting $133,000 salary plus over $74,000 in pension at the same time, both from the city of Troy. According to a Detroit Free Press article, this amount, these amounts have now gone up in the year 2011. We can't afford that extravagance. It's not to say we don't have good employees who should get good paying benefits. It's not to say we shouldn't have a city manager who gets good pay, but this is extravagant. The Illinois Policy Institute has talked about this problem nationwide, and they said this. There is a great inequity when you ask taxpayers to raise their taxes to pay for governmental benefits and perks that they, the taxpayers themselves, do not have. Understand that Michigan taxes will start going up this winter, some pensions will be taxed. The property tax credit will start to phase out at $41,000. The senior citizen formula at $21,000. We don't need this tax increase at all. This is the worst millage proposal, this is the worst millage proposal that's been put to us. We have to vote it down. We can't afford it in this economy, and I thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of council.
Next we'll hear from James Grith. But before you start, I'll call the next five people. Kent Sharkey, James Savage, Christopher Kaluza, Carol Verholy, and Christine Hill. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm a Troy resident 26 years, and I'm very much for the library. I think it's very important we keep the library open. And I'm very much against the property tax increase. How much longer do we need to keep raising taxes and fees and spending for these various public relations people and these, I would say, tilted polls? There's no wonder there's surveys that people really don't trust the, most of the Troy city council anymore. They all ran for office saying they weren't going to raise taxes, and here we go, and there's even rumors of a snow tax on the November ballot. We can't afford to raise taxes. The city of Sterling Heights took some of their rainy day money, a significant amount, and spent it on existing city programs, and they had no effect on their bond rating or anything. We got 20, $12 million, over $12 million. We got 20, $12 million, over $12 million set aside for, quote, rainy day. This is rainy day. Two and a half million for the library, to me, is not significant. We definitely could use that and keep the rest. It's just ridiculous. I think tax revenue has increased on a federal and state level, and the returns on investments for the retirements have increased, so that budgets all over the place are loosening up, except in Troy. Some sort of magic. We have a high tax system, we have a much higher assessment on homes and businesses than, say, Rochester Hills or Farmington Hills. You can check it out on the internet. I would say, if you want to preserve Troy and keep it viable, you've got to vote against the library proposal. To me, it's very, very bad. We talk about the railroad to nowhere, that the council keeps seeming to want to keep going with. Who's going to maintain that train station in nowhere? There's always ongoing maintenance and picking up the litter, all the rest of it, the insurance and all that stuff. Who's going to pay for that? We spent money liberally on the streets with the water fountains and things like that, the flowers that have to be cared for, where, again, in Sterling Heights, they don't. They've got beautiful shrubs and things like that, and they don't have to be handled more than once a year. I think that Troy has got to look at what they're doing, and to me, raising taxes is pure suicide, and I would advise people that can afford it to pay the tax increase, to vote no, to consider their neighbors that are possibly losing their house. The people that are losing their house now are long-term Troy residents. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Kent Sharkey.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm Kent Sharkey. I'm here tonight to represent the Troy Chamber of Commerce in being a resident in Troy for 18 years. It's the Troy Chamber of Commerce mission to promote an environment that builds successful business and thriving communities. With that being said, the Board of Directors of Troy Chamber, per the recommendations of its Economic Development Committee, have approved a resolution to support for the proposed library millage. The resolution is a result through evaluation and the acknowledgement that a library is essential to long-term economic viability at Troy. This support, however, recognizes that the Troy library must reinvent itself and pursue the most efficient operational methods possible. As a result, support for the library millage does not stand alone. The Troy Chamber of Commerce supports the library millage with the expectation that the Troy Public Library will use its given time over the next five years to conduct a strategic planning process that will evaluate its business model. This planning process shall take into account that libraries' functions have changed over the recent years, and the Troy Public Library needs to adopt intentionally and efficiently these new changes that have taken place in technology. Thank you for your time.
Next we'll hear from James Savage.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, good evening, Council. I was looking at the headline in this little paper, and then the federal grants for Transit Center cannot be moved to the library. And then further on, the article goes on to indicate that opposition to the Transit Center, there's some kind of a TCU plot tied to the library. I don't know where they got, where the newspaper got its information, but I would like to clarify a few points. I believe I was one of the first persons to voice opposition to the Transit Center, and that was long before the library became an issue. In fact, for over 10 years, I have tried to get support for a viable, affordable, and efficient transport, public transport system, but none of our leaders would listen, right in this room. The Transit Center should not be confused with any other issue, except the big issue of blatant waste of taxpayer money. There is not much we can do about the waste in Washington, but we can make a difference here in Troy. For the sake of our children and our grandchildren, we have to stop the waste now. In closing, I would like to make it clear that my view on any issue has always been my own. I do not speak for the TCU. I do not speak for the Democratic Party, or the Republican Party, or the Tea Party, or Let's Have a Party, or any other party. Over the years, I have found that many Troy residents share my views. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Christopher. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? I have a great deal of respect for the members of the City Council. Of course, we're divided over the issue of the library mill, but that's a difference of public policy. We can still keep the conversation respectable, but it seems as if, as we continue on, we're becoming more and more polarized. And I'm taken aback by the comments that were stated by a member of this council during the last meeting, specifically Mr. Slater. We can have our differences of opinion, but there is no need to call the concerns of citizens crap. This is a public policy difference. You are a member of the City Council who is supposed to be listening and respecting the views of all citizens. That's what you were put there to do. So tonight I ask you to apologize to the people of this city who put you there, and to please continue to respect those views. I'm not calling you out for your, for your record, okay? I'm positive you served this city honorably when you were a member of the police force. I give you a lot of credit for doing that, and I thank you for all your services to this city. But that does not make that comment acceptable. Thank you very much.
Next we'll hear from Carol Verhally. Verhally, yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, city staff and residents. I come to you today as a 36-year homeowner in this great city of Troy, and as a Wayne State University faculty member. In my life, as in my career, learning, researching, and reading have always been vital. The possibility of losing our wonderful and bustling library is, to me, absolutely inconceivable. Our library and our phenomenal director are award-winning and future-thinking. We can save the library with a millage vote on August 2. Supporters of this village are many, including some from whom you've already heard, the League of Women Voters, the Troy Chamber of Commerce, the nonpartisan citizens group called Trust, friends of the Troy Public Library, the Troy School Board, and most of you on City Council. Lately, there have been many mistruths and negative mailings circulating around town, full of negative rhetoric and blatantly false statements. These efforts to defeat the library millage proposal are misguided and self-serving to a few apparently short-sighted members of our community. Why on earth would folks want to distort the facts in an effort to shutter one of our community's gems, resulting in even greater lowering of property values and making Troy a less attractive place to live and to do business? Our city leaders have already done much to confront Troy shrinking revenue due to lower property values, including layoffs, concessions, cuts in nonessential services, privatization, and downsizing. And yet, our emergency fund and Troy's core services have been maintained. Troy has taken difficult but necessary steps to address our revenue issue, and that's exactly what we faced, a revenue issue, not a management or spending issue. Troy's use of sound business practices will allow us to maintain our excellent bond rating. I can tell you that the property taxes on our home have decreased several hundred dollars in the past couple of years, as have those of many Troy friends and neighbors. So it's easy to see why the city's revenues are shrinking, and difficult decisions have been required. I thank you for your efforts to keep our city solvent and on course through these difficult economic times. Some call this proposed military, library millage, a tax increase. I say that with property taxes having decreased so much already, the average of $70 per year for library is a drop in the bucket by comparison. We have all heard many times that it takes a village. Our community needs our library, and it's time for our village to step up and see that it is saved. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Next we'll hear, before I call, Chris Hill, come forward, but I'll call the next five people. Behind Mrs. Hill, could we please have Dan Brake, Shane Hinson, Thomas Burke, and Susan Martin, in that order? Good evening.
Good evening. Chris Hill, 21-year homeowner. I have here a picture, I know it's little, of a small but lovely library in Presqueal, north of Alpena. I visited this library last Friday and signed in to use one of their computers. The librarian noted my Troy address and immediately conveyed her surprise and concern about what's happening with our library. She knew all about our millage election and wished us luck on the outcome. Goes to show that even people hours away from us are informed and concerned about what's going on in our town. I'm a strong library supporter, and I'm concerned about the politics being played over this issue. There have been flyers and mailings sent out to distort the truth and misrepresent the facts. I'm sure many of you have seen the one that would have you believe our city manager's salary is a quarter of a million dollars. Truth is, his salary is about $130,000. Since he's already retired, he hasn't got that benefit package. If we hired someone else, it would be this salary and a complete benefit package. What we have is a bargain in Mr. Zurlag. I was concerned a couple of weeks ago, I drove by a business on Livernoy that had a no sign in their front yard, but interestingly, way over to the side of the yard, and I've done business with them many, many times, and just didn't think they were the types to want to shutter the library. That evening I went in and discussed it with them, and I said, I'm just a little confused about the no sign in your yard. They had no clue it was in their yard. This negative group alleges mismanagement. However, mismanaged cities don't receive AAA bond ratings from Standard and Poor's, but Troy is one of only three in Michigan that has. Mismanaged cities don't receive awards from the Governmental Finance Officers Association. Troy does. How about a great safety rating? Our city gets acclaim for that, too. Mismanaged public libraries do not receive awards, rating them number 10 in the nation, but ours did. Excellent library directors receive awards, as Kathy Rust did just about a week ago. The city of Troy has achieved concessions from every full-time employee. I checked around. No other city in our area has done that. Troy, again, takes the lead. We've lost 150 full-time employees, have shrunk and privatized departments, and our police force is becoming smaller. Not good news, but necessary in this economic environment to keep our city fiscally viable. Best business practices have long been the norm in Troy. Mismanaged, no. Short on revenue due to shrinking property values, yes. We need this millage dedicated solely to the library, which is what it is. It's simple. A yes vote keeps our wonderful, award-winning library open. There's a gentleman that mentioned the watering and the flowers in the medians along the roads. I'm saying, take a look. That was one of the first things that went. Those medians are dry as dust, and I haven't seen a flower in a while. Thank you.
Next we'll hear from Dan Brake. Good evening.
I think it's ridiculous, and I've said it here before, for the League of Women Voters or the Troy Chamber to come up here and tell us they have longstanding positions for funding of a community library. Where were they 14 months ago, when four of you voted to strip our library of all of its funding? Invisible. It seems there are four tax increases rather than funding a library. I've asked, starting six months ago, for you to make available a list of how much employees earn and of what the benefit costs are. Only last meeting, one of you finally began a discussion on that subject, far too late to make that information available. By the time you ask us to vote, I'm giving you more money. So lacking that information, I've had to turn to your own data. This is a document of yours, 585 pages long, available for five bucks from the city clerk's office with a freedom of information request. Obviously, I didn't print all of it, but I took every number related to employee costs out of it, and I added them up. The number for personal services, what that term means is the time on the job that somebody's supposedly actually working, in your right now current 2012 budget is $21 million. Add to that $60,000 for elected officials, that's your stipends and other appointed boards, $1,600,000 for FICA, $397,000 for workers' comp, $1 million for sick pay, over $4 million for health care and life insurance, $1,800,000 for vacation, and over $7,145,000 for retirement benefits. That adds up to $37 million out of your total general fund budget of $54,500,000. So you're paying $37 million for your workforce this year. If you really have negotiated a 10% savings, that's $3.7 million. That's a library and extra to take care of other things. So why are you asking us to vote for a tax increase? Every number I've just quoted you is available from this report, and any of the flying monkeys that keep challenging Troy Citizens United's data, I'd be happy to tell you the page number you can find it on. Thank you for your attention.
Next we'll hear from Shane Hinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, just got a few things, so I'll be quick. First, I'd like to thank all of you for serving the city and sitting up there and taking a lot of insults from people over and over again about tax increases or libraries or whatever. There are many of us who still support you and what you're doing for the city, and we thank you for that. Secondly, in response to, I guess, the gentleman before me and a few others asking this question why we're not using the emergency, I believe the $12 million's in the emergency fund. That's used for, you know, emergencies. It's not just used because we want to keep a library open, and in bad economic times, you have to increase revenue into the city, or you've got to cut services. And in my opinion, the Troy Citizens United want all the services, but don't want to pay any of the money, and expect all of you to work for free so that they can just, I don't know, be happy at home, whatever it may be. But finally, I want to urge everyone here on August 2 to vote yes for the library millage. It's a great city service. I grew up here in Troy, working on my masters and my PhD, and part of the reason I got, became an academic was because I loved reading, and the Troy's library helped me in that goal, and I'll be voting yes, and I hope everyone else does, too. So thank you very much for your time and sitting here, and have a wonderful evening.
Mr. Burke, we'll hear from you next.
On Tuesday, on the Tuesday after the last, the last council meeting, I thought my comments here would, tonight would be pretty simple. I did just what the representative from SaveTroy.org asked everybody to do. I went to their website and looked at what they call in bold letters "the truth." What I found there was anything but the truth. What you will find in that, under that caption, is information that Save Troy has fraudulently altered information that has been distributed by Troy Citizens United and reported it to be something that TCU has never claimed it to be. And based on the heading, it's apparent that they know they've done this. I was surprised that any group in Troy could sink that low, but I guess I shouldn't have been, because that was Tuesday, would be two weeks ago tomorrow. That was before the Detroit Free Press did their expose on the pro-tax crowd. Exposing the pro-tax crowd as to being responsible for the disgusting book-burning signs that have appeared around Troy. The sheer audacity of one of the pro-tax crowd to bring one of those signs into this meeting last time, trying to put the blame for that on another group, is absolutely outrageous. That same person was quoted in the Free Press that these signs are sick and subversive behavior in our community. That is, right up until the time that the Free Press found out that it was the pro-tax people that were behind those signs. The same person then changes their quote the next day to say they love... The same person then changes their quote the next day to say they love whoever is responsible. That is the height of hypocrisy. That person, that pro-tax person, was correct that this is sick and subversive behavior, and that is reflected directly on the pro-tax group and their about-face, their fraudulent alteration of our information. That whole campaign is now discredited. I'm not surprised at all that none of the people there that wanted to talk about truth wanted to come and apologize to the community for giving us a black eye. Another national attention brought to Troy, more humiliation and a black eye. And of course, this same group has failed to file its campaign financing reports that were due Friday and has been assessed fines by the county clerk's office. That is, because they don't want to acknowledge the people behind it that are responsible until after the election, so we won't know who to blame for those wonderful signs. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Sue Martin.
Good evening. Good evening. AAA bond rating by all three rating agencies, top-rated schools, stellar library, safest city due to a top-notch police force. These are the benchmarks of a great city, the kind of place anyone would want to live, work, shop, or play. This is Troy. Yet over the next week, I'm sure you're going to hear even more outrageous claims like the lies that we're just told now from the anti-tax group and the individuals who will try and convince you otherwise. And they want, no, they need for you to believe that Troy is mismanaged. Why do they need that? It's all part of a very well-financed strategy to further their own personal agenda. Make no mistake, for them, this has very little to do with the library and everything to do with politics. The reality, and the proof is undeniable, that Troy is a strong, fiscally responsible, well-run city. Friends, it is time to take the politics out of Troy and out of the library and think about the one decision we have to make that has nothing to do with politics. That decision is, do we want a library or not? We've been told over and over that there is some magic way, some magic plan, to keep it without paying it. We've been privy to this shock and awe, "Look at the numbers, I can prove the numbers, here are the numbers," that are not relevant to the situation. There has not been a fiscally responsible plan that will fund that library in the long term. We know that draining our emergency fund balance would put our bond rating in jeopardy, and using it to fund the library would be like draining our own savings accounts to pay for some recurring monthly bill, like our electricity. In the end, then, that money's gone, and the library would have to close. How fiscally responsible is that? Consider this: We heard we never have emergencies. Well, right now, on Tomlin Road, repairs are being made to not one, but three water main breaks. That was a huge expense that wasn't expected, and that's what the emergency fund is for, not for bankrolling a core service, not to mention it's already allocated in the three-year budget. I was raised to believe that if I want something, I had to pay for it. Nothing comes for free. If we want to keep this award-winning library, we have to fund it with a millage, viable, dedicated, long-term plan that saves that library. We have to vote yes to save 40 years of community investment. I don't know about all of you, but throwing away a 40-year investment is not fiscally responsible. When you hear these outrageous claims that seem too unreal to be true, it's because they're usually not. SaveTroy.org has vetted their information over and over. We have shown and poked holes in the things that are not true. We need to say no to political trickery in Troy, and we need to say yes to the library and yes to saving this great city, keeping it as great as it is today.
It concludes those that signed up to speak, and...
Madam Mayor, when TCU members attend these meetings and step out of the meeting at the last minute to be the last person, you chastise us each time. Please do so to the person who just spoke, to be even-handed. Thank you.
Mr. Burke, you've been in meetings enough to know that we do not expect people to shout out from the back of the audience. Response to public comment will occur, and I'd like to begin by asking the city attorney after I make a comment about, she questioned about why on the ballot proposal there's capture funds for DDA, Brownfield Redevelopment, and LDFA. And Mrs. Bloom, before I call on you, I'd like to indicate that those funds are required by law, that they are paid by the businesses within those areas. They are not paid by the residents at all. They are not paid by residents that are in the community in general. The reason that it was put on the ballot language, Mrs. Bloom will speak to, because it is state law. So, Mrs. Bloom, will you tell us why that's on there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have been receiving a lot of inquiries about the ballot language, and I would just indicate that the ballot language is required by state statute to include every entity that will receive money. And there will be no residential taxes that are going to be given to the DDA, the LDFA, or the Brownfield Authority if the millage were to pass. State statute, again, does require all of these entities to be listed on the ballot since there is no way for these entities to opt out of any millage increase, and these entities will therefore receive a nominal amount of money from the businesses in those districts, so...
And the businesses will be paying tax money toward the library because...
Correct.
That is also required. If something passes, is required of all the entities.
Correct.
It's just that captured part that, from the businesses, that go to the DDA, and if you'll notice, the amounts that are listed there are very small, and that is for the yearly amount, and those amounts will go down because the valuations will go down, and they will pay less. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I'd like to address is this, and folks, if you go to the city website, the very first item above the stated city address, you will see an icon at the top about employee facts and budget facts. I'm going to speak to the budget facts because it's been indicated over and over again that we should just pay for the library from the undesignated, unreserved funds. However, any of you that have looked at the three-year budgets going out can see that monies are going to be used to pay for designated budgetary necessities over those years. And I'd like to read from this for you. The city budgeted $2.000,000, $131,000 of general fund balance to cover the expected shortfall between revenues and expenditures for the 2012 fiscal year. This is expected to bring the undesignated, unassigned general fund balance down to $9,700,000 or 17.5 of annual expenditures. Then, the city budgeted $780,660 of general fund balance for the 2013 fiscal year and an additional $2,653,160 to cover shortfalls expected in the 2014 fiscal year. This is expected to bring unassigned general fund balance down to $6,266,000 or 12.4% of annual expenditures at the end of the 2014 year. The reason that I read that to you is thus: Monies for the library, a dedicated millage for the library, will ensure that there's funding for the library and the library only in this vote that is coming up on August 2nd. Monies that are used from undesignated, unreserved go away, they are not renewable, and therefore, monies for the library to be over an extended period of time are not available. We keep explaining this, but people keep coming back and saying the same things over and over. I ask you to go to the city website, look for the information, look at the three-year budget. You will see there what the information is. So please, look at that information. The other thing I'd like to address is this: I feel that it is a shame that our community feels that some individuals, not all, but some, have to come and slander council members or city staff members in their comments during public comment. I do not think it is appropriate. I do not feel that that is the reason for public comment in a session. Public comment is to comment on items that are in the agenda, or if you have a comment that you wish to make that is not in the agenda, but it should be done in a careful manner. I realize that there is difference of opinion on issues, but I certainly would hope that the citizens in our community expect better of all of us, and I would hope that that would occur.
Mayor?
Councilman Harlock.
It's actually interesting that you mention that when you yourself slandered me last year, and I didn't press the issue.
Miss me, Councilman Harlock, point of order.
As I was saying, in response to your question...
I did not slander you.
Mayor, point of order. I have the floor. Mayor, you know, you make these comments that this council and this community is at each other's throats, and you do nothing to enhance the discussion on this city council. We need to be consistent in our statements, and to have one standard for five members of council and another standard for two members of council is quite frankly atrocious. And it's, and you are, Mayor, a part of the problem. We, and I mean me and you, can be part of the solution if we decide to be part of the solution. This is one week before the election, and I think it's very inappropriate for this body to debate the merits of the proposal, because really, the merits need to be debated within the community. The point of this part of the meeting is simply to correct the record from misstatements, and we are devaluing this part of the meeting by engaging in acrimonious debate, personal attacks, rebuttals, ad hominem attacks, calling, you know, you cannot just go and say somebody slandered or libeled somebody unless you can actually back that up. All seven of us are up here are held to a higher standard, and unfortunately, by our positions up here, it's almost impossible for somebody in the community to slander or libel us. It's one of the detriments of being an elected official, that you basically have to take it out, take it on the chin, so to say, and you have to have a thick skin. I think that, now, I will tell you that I disagree with the comments that Councilman Slater made at the last meeting, but I also believe that there is room for differences of opinion, and I, quite frankly, I value his presence here on city council, so I think we need to actually, I would say that if you have an issue with what Councilman Slater said, tell him that you have an issue with what he said, and don't attack him as an individual. I think it's very important, because he was, like the rest of us on here on the city council, elected to represent you, and I think that's very important, and I think that he tries to do his best. And, you know, he and I disagree on certain things, but I'll tell you one thing: He has a right to be up here, and he has a right to speak his mind. I did also want to comment, though, I was concerned, because one member of the public mentioned that the, that library, or excuse me, water main work affected the undesignated, unreserved fund balance. And that's not the case, because the water main relates to an enterprise fund, and an enterprise fund is funded essentially by fees that you pay on your water and sewer bills. So I think it's important that we, if we want to advocate for the truth and we don't know what the truth is, that we not claim it as truth. The real truth is that water mains, water main projects are funded through the enterprise fund, and they do not impact fund balance.
The other council members or staff that wish to respond to public comment? Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I just wanted to correct one of the statements that was, there was a reference to the fact that the millage, if it does pass, that it would not necessarily be dedicated to the library because it's not within the charter, and I just want to say that that is not my reading at all. I'm not sure what the detail is to back that up, but if this millage is passed, Mayor and members of city council, it would go all to the library. So I just wanted to make sure that that statement was very clear.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Councilback, may I?
All except the part that has to be allocated to the DDA, the Brownfield, the LDFA as increased capture for them. The other thing that someone mentioned was, and I think it's important to listen to, not just library comments, the tax abatement language that was changed. It was alluded that the petitioner for that could change it back or to change something else, and it is my understanding that once this council passes a resolution and says this is how it's going to be, that is the final word. Is that not true?
Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, that is correct. When council has passed a resolution, it is available, it is certified in the minutes, you will be approving that, but no, it, that is the resolution, and that is what will be forwarded on to the state.
And, yes, clarification for the city manager, if I might. One of the other people who spoke talked about the Rochester Road intersection improvements of, I think, four years ago is actually when that project was done, and the water fountain that's there, which I believe the developer of Rochester Commons actually did that work, and then the Veterans Plaza out in front here was...